All right, six o'clock we'll call though.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Before we get too far, I apologize to parents tonight. If you have, if a text message comes through, I will be leaving. Jamie will take over at that point. That's if it goes, the meeting goes longer than the game, so. Next item is community forum.
I got something I want to add to the agenda, I guess.
Okay.
An executive session on student matter.
Okay. Okay, anything for community forum? Hearing nothing, conflict of interest declarations. I will ask that nine point five point two be separate, separated. I will abstain from Amy's. And then, um, I can hear the rest of them. All right, number five, any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda adding student matter to personnel?
Motion.
Motion by Ted. Second by Jamie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye, motion carried. Communication and discussion items, administrative reports, business manager.
Okay, um, I just, I decided to talk about state aid formula instead of taxes for the first, first of my things I've talked into you. So I, so I got you some information, it's the smaller, smaller stuff. Uh, the state aid formula is kind of a confusing formula. And so like the three, first three pages talk about it, about how, I know it says FY twenty twenty twenty-two, but it's the same formula for this year too, except that they raised, um, some of the stuff. And this is an estimate because of course it hasn't all gone through yet. But how they base it, base it on a target teacher ratio plus calculating the number of students. And so, if you look at the fourth page, I printed off what the, how the spreadsheet kind of goes. Basically, all I gotta do is put in my state aid enrollment count. And then, I'm not sure what my LEP, my language, students will be, but, um, three was last year, so I just went with three, that doesn't do it a whole lot. And then the rest is the formula with the targeted certified teacher staff of what they think. So all those numbers kind of stay the same. Once I plug in my numbers, it calculates what the total general state aid needs. And so I, on the paper I gave you guys, I calculated it out of enrollment of three hundred and twenty. And then you can see that that brings up around two million four hundred and eighty-one dollars. In FY two thousand eighteen, the, they put into the formula also local effort, which they're trying to equalize our other revenue of all the schools, in which our other revenue includes your utility tax, your revenue in lieu of taxes, and your bank taxes, bank franchise tax, wind farm, which we don't get in county enforcement. So they phased that in with, um, over five years, which then now is going to be finally two, basically that's all in the formula. So when they, after they figure out what you need, then you minus your taxes for the year, the school year, and then you minus your local effort. And then that's where they come up with what they're going to give you per state aid. So on the last page then, I just, what I want to point out is, um, what we need, if things go as is, um, we're looking at like three hundred and twenty students, because we have a huge senior class and we don't have as many kindergartners coming in. So we're down to, what, three thirty-two at this point today? And then if you minus the difference between the kids, it's between your graduating and coming in, you could be down to three twenty. So that's not taken into consideration, if we got some kids coming in, enrollments or something, that usually fluctuates in the summer where you got families moving and some coming in. So I just wanted to show where starting in FY seventeen, what the state aid formula said it was. And then, um, I showed what the increases was from year to year, and I showed you what the enrollments have been since FY seventeen, and then if we've been gaining or losing kids. And then the difference after other revenue, so what, what people don't always understand is, so they're trying to equalize those, equalize that other revenue, well, that's always been revenue for us. But now that revenue is kind of calculated into the formula, so I can't, so it's, it's still revenue, but it's kind of a loss because it's into the formula now, based where it wasn't in the formula before. So, uh, the top four lines are basically, um, what an estimate is, you know, until the legislature's done, will we know if that six percent really goes through? Uh, what our state aid formula could be if we had three hundred and twenty kids, three hundred and thirty kids, three hundred and forty kids, or three hundred and fifty kids. And then I just wanted to point out that I budgeted this year with three hundred and fifty kids and we came in, it came in at three hundred and forty, so, um, we did, we didn't generate quite as much revenue as I anticipated. I mean, that six, if that six percent does go through, I mean, it's a nice, it's a, it's, it would be a great, um, great thing. What hurts is, um, when your enrollment does not stay the same. So, um, I looked at, so based on my three, if, we would have gotten three fifty in what we would have gotten for revenue, and if you would have looked at FY twenty-three, and if you had the three fifty kids, then you'd, um, two point six, you'd get, well, that's like a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar increase. So I mean, we would maintain, that is a wonderful increase, it's just, need to get our kids to their enrollment. Does anyone got any questions?
Is there one day a year they count enrollment, and when is that?
The, the last day is, the last Friday in September.
Is it always that?
And in our case, it would be the last Thursday in September, unless you have school on Friday. So I did an evaluation then of our enrollment since two thousand nineteen, end of year, so that would have been the last day of school twenty nineteen, which we technically weren't in person in school, that's when we were closed, but we were still conducting classes. So since that time, this has been our enrollment to today. So those are numbers from spring twenty nineteen until what we have today in school. Overall total, um, three have transferred to a private school, three students. Five have transferred to a different public school. Seven students have returned to their home district, so they were open enrolled students and then they went back to their home district. Eight students have begun to homeschool and we've, we have had twenty-one students have moved out of the district. So that is a total of forty-four students, which plays into what you see Amy put together. On the flip side of that, we have gained twenty-five students since twenty nineteen, end of the school year. And then when we look at our difference in classes that Amy was talking about, last year's senior class and this year's senior class were two of our biggest classes. This year's kindergarten class right now is twenty-two, our graduating class last year was twenty-eight. Next year's kindergarten class is currently seventeen, but we're graduating thirty-two this year. So those two heavy classes at the top combined with two low on the bottom, plays into that as well. Amy and Mrs. Heider and I have been talking about ideas to gain students, and we've talked about having an open house for current and prospective students in March. You know, inviting families in because they get to come in at the open house in the fall, but just come in, look at the classrooms this spring as well. Advertise with a brochure, so Mrs. Heider put together a brochure when she was in grad school, and then we updated it with current numbers that they have now. So to be able to get that information out there, uh, we had Brandy make an ad to put on our Facebook page, because there is a lot of misconception out there that we are completely full for students. So when you talk to families, well, I'd like my students to come to your school, but I know you're full. So we've got to start getting the word out there, we're not full anymore. We would welcome open enrolled students. And I got paperwork from Amy for students that have tried to open enroll in the past, but we denied them due to class sizes, and we did a lot of that that summer of twenty nineteen, going into the fall of twenty twenty because of COVID and because of the classrooms and how we had everything spread out. So that's a total of twenty-two students right there that tried to get into our school and we denied due to class size. So that is what we are going to do starting this week, contacting those families and saying, please come over and look at our school, we do have openings, we would welcome you to come visit with us and if you'd like to reapply for consideration of your application. So those are some things we've talked about, you know, we haven't, we did this when we first, when open enrollment first started, and Mr. Box was here, that was twenty-five years ago. And we put together brochures and started getting things out there and, um, there's just a lot of movement, especially in the last two years, between school districts, people physically moving, things like that happening, and since we had denied so many COVID, that is the misconception with a lot of families, so we just need to word them out, I think will be huge for us, to get the word out that we're accepting students. Please come visit, visit us, we'll give you a tour, you can look with teachers and we would welcome you to come to our school, so. That's my part of the evening, so you can generate revenue, get students in the building.
I think it's a great idea, I think it would be a good idea too, if we had any parents that are on board with allowing some of our students to come in and have their student like mentor with another student that they had and show their student around, um, to get the student buy-in, because we can get the parent buy-in, but sometimes that student buy-in, that's a great idea to pay us even more.
Basically, if you guys have any questions later on, after you pick, just let me know. Just figured I'd start with this, since budgeting will start, I mean, negotiations will start before we know it. Any other questions, Amy?
Okay, elementary principal. So I'm going to start with, we have been pairing with the PTO for the Miller School District. Right now with the PTO, we're running a supply drive for Miller. That ends on Monday, I believe, and then they'll be taking that over to the school. Also, our book fair is running and hopefully Lacey gets it out there pretty soon, but it's, hm, it's there. No, I don't, but then, but, does it say anything about what she's doing with the money?
Yeah.
Okay, so she's taking the money with the book fair, so the amount of books we buy and the money we spend there, then we get a percentage of that back in books. So like their library books are no good just from the ash and the smoke, so we're going to take all of the books that we get from that and we're going to send them to Miller for their library to start rebuilding. And then I got a, got a, when we started doing the supply drive, um, Mr. Drake over there, their principal, elementary principal, called and talked to me and asked if we could send over our, any curriculum that we have for certain things, so we were able to match up with their uh, second, third, fourth, fifth grade, uh, social studies and science curriculum, so we sent everything extra we had over to them so they could start doing that. The teachers had to go through all their boxes and, so it's a lot of work, but hopefully we gave them some good stuff, they came over and picked it up on Friday, so that was nice. It was a hundredth day of school today, so that was fun. Um, and then we've been, so elementary went and met with Mary Lou McGur, the CNA, the lady who was here to do our CNA report, and basically it helps with our Title I funding. So the elementary one is done. Basically Jennifer went through, I gave it to Jennifer today, we went through it, she okayed it, and now Mary Lou comes back and we kind of go through the final steps and how to put it into play into the Title I program. And so we have the middle school left to do, and we have the high school left to do, but it's, it's very, it's a lot, it's very time consuming, we spend a lot of hours here in the evening, the people who are on that committee, so it's a, it's a good job, and it doesn't take very long, you find out a lot of in-depth information about the school. So when those are all done, we'll have a report for you guys to let you know how things work. But I mean, our elementary school looked really, it looked really good, so. There's a lot, but there's a lot of fun things that she brings up that we can put back in, and you know, COVID kind of took us for a loop, but now we got to come back around, so. And that's all I have.
Okay, um, secondary question.
So the certificates I handed you, I wanted to start off with school board appreciation week, which is February twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, in recognition of dedicated leadership in public education and for improving achievement for all public school students. Associated School Boards of South Dakota honors the Wolfie-Watton School District, the school board members. And that's from Eric Stroeder, the president of Associated School Board. So thank you very much for your time, I know you put a lot of time into this as well, so we really appreciate it and our board should do as well. We received great news after reaching out to Boosters and Onward Wolfie about the sign. Onward Wolfie donated two thousand five hundred dollars and Boosters donated ten thousand dollars. So we got half the sign paid for by contacting those two groups. So if you see Laura tonight at Concessions, please tell her thank you, please buy food at Concessions, that's where that money comes from. Uh, and Michelle Johnson is the head of Onward Wolfie, so.
And we also got the money for the Warbird cards, you know, if you use your Warbird card, certain percent goes in. So what we did is we put in, um, to get diggers for the playground, so you know what I mean? You sit on the diggers and it's like.
Escavators, I would guess.
And they dig, so we got a little one for the little kids, and then there's one you can stand behind and dig, and then there's one that's adult size, because we have some bigger kids that really like that stuff, so, um, those will be coming, we get that tonight at the ballgame. Very excited, we were excited about it, but.
We were able to sell the salad bar that we surplused, so we sold that to a restaurant in Alpena for what we were asking, so that was good. Uh, we had our kitchen inspection last week, they scored ninety-nine out of one hundred. I think they had some salad containers that were face up instead of face down, that was the one point. So Marilyn, Marie, Lynette, they did a great job with that. And please thank them when you see them, because they've been dealing with a lot of, you'll notice the menu changes sometimes because of everything else. Something doesn't come in, a different product comes in, so they have done a great job of dealing with that as well. Last week, we had our annual fire inspection, and within thirty days, I'll submit our correction plan to the state fire marshal office. Shane and I met with the state inspector when he was finished with his walk-around, and some things we need to correct are making sure exit pathways are wide enough out of the buildings in each classroom. So when they look in the classrooms, they want to make sure there are thirty-six inches for every student to be able to get to the door. So they listed specific classrooms that we'll look at seating within that. The wooden cabinets by Mrs. Heider's office, we need to replace with fire resistant ones. Making sure that we don't have storage items too closely to mechanical equipment and plugging some items directly into outlets versus power strips. So overall, the inspection went pretty well, so we will get those done within the next thirty days. On February second, we have Brett Garland from Homeland Security come speak with middle school and high school students about internet safety, social media safety, and it was really eye-opening for them. I think sometimes in South Dakota, we're naive as to what can happen with things like that, and he talked about, uh, different things that they've seen in South Dakota, so the students in talking with them found out a lot of things that I think we as adults, as educators, as parents, tell them, this could happen if you're on social media and this could happen, but having someone else come in that they don't know and having some testimony from students, um, it was really powerful, I thought, so. Congratulations to our state FFA degree recipients, will be honored at the state convention. Congratulations to our girls' basketball team for earning second place in the two eighty-one tournament, and to our boys' basketball team for winning the tournament. The one act play was held, they went to region competition, and several students got acting awards, it was one of Mrs. House's best years, so she was very excited. Good luck to our wrestlers as they travel to Wagner on Saturday for the region tournament, that was supposed to be held in Miller. And so everything that happened in Miller, it got moved to Wagner, so they will head down there Saturday. And then good luck to our girls' basketball and boys' basketball teams as they get ready to enter postseason play. Next week is FFA week, and our chapter will be having a petting zoo for students next Wednesday. This Friday, the teachers and some of the paraprofessionals will be traveling to the Smith for regional in-service. Topics covered include resilience, structures for academic talk, parent tips and tricks, school culture, student engagement, English learner strategies, and teaching in a student-driven classroom, and I'd love to go there. There are about five schools that go, so part of the day, at the end of the day, you get to, all the administrators get together, the counselors, first grade teachers, second grade teachers, so it's a great opportunity for, especially when we have one middle school math teacher, he can get, she can get together with other middle school math teachers and talk about things that are happening. So we will be at that this Friday. That's what I have.
Um, next is the Mid Central report, um, I actually had a conference call scheduled, they conflicted, and I couldn't remember who my backup was, so if somebody could tell me that?
I attended it.
Okay.
Via phone.
Okay.
There was not much to report, it kind of ties in with Core. So Core would like to do some updates to the building in Platte, but Mid Central owns the building, Core rents the building, they're still going through that whole process. They both agreed that whatever improvements, carpet, things like that, it will come off of what the purchase price will be. So that was the main, actually for both meetings, that was the main point of the discussion.
Thank you, I caught you in your honor in a meeting. I'll cheers, so. Yeah, I drew a blanket who my person was.
It was fifteen minutes.
Yeah, hence usually.
Yep, sure.
Um, next, so that takes care of Mid Central and Core, um, next is the consent agenda. There are just a few items on there, does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda, any items? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion by Jeff, second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Call opposed, same sign. Nothing was pulled. Um, action items, new and unfinished business. Nine point one, softball, intend to participate, SDH, SAA, four.
So the South Dakota High School Activities Association is going to start softball, uh, next year. So they put out a survey to the schools, so we have to send this back, the board has to vote, and then we have to send this back this week. The options are, we plan to participate in a school-sponsored softball team, or we plan to participate in a school board-approved transition team, and they define that somewhat, or our school will not be participating at this time. Mr. Erickson, just reach out to Wesington Springs, we talked with them in wrestling, you know, what are your thoughts down there, and they said, we don't have much, uh, interest in that. It would be the same time as track season, we have a number of females that participate in JO volleyball at that time too. So a lot of them are in two sports already, so this would be a third one. I did, uh, talk to Dr. Crossway from Miller, you know, she reached out to us, Highmore Herald. Would there be thoughts if anyone added of a possible co-op, but no one really knew what their participation might be with that either, so, uh, we have right now six girl sports and five boy sports with sideline cheer counting as one of those. So as far as competitive sports, right now we have five and five. So if we added softball, we would have one additional. And if we count sideline cheer, which we used to before we had wrestling, to try to keep things equal, we'd actually be seven and five, heavy for the girls, so.
Do we have much demand from student?
One student asked about it, and that student is graduating this year. We have a lot of girls that play in the summer, I do know that. Uh, I know JO volleyball is really big right now with our girls, and I know that doing track in JO, some of you have probably had daughters do that, that's a lot already, and so it would be tough, as Mr. Erickson and I talked, you know, if Miller wanted to do something, you're with the Highmore Herald, I mean, logistically, that's quite a big co-op as well, and could all of us even put the numbers together, we didn't even know if we could, so. Our thoughts were maybe the state starts it and see how it goes and see.
You can add it anytime.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion or any ideas on that?
Do you have a recommendation?
In talking with Mr. Erickson, we thought at this time, no, because of the amount of sports we have, and then let the state get that going, and then maybe, you know, we didn't have competitive cheer for a number of years, then we added it, and that's really big, maybe that will happen in the future, but at this time, we did not feel that with everything else that they have going on.
So like, in the fall, there's a bunch of girls that decide like they're interested in playing softball. At what point can we, like?
I think at that point, they did say in the email, because everyone's kind of up in the air, the schools are, that you could contact them and say, hey, we're going to try a transition team, just to try it out. This is just their preliminary to see what, what does it look like.
Need a motion from us or just?
I'd make a motion to not participate at this time.
Motion by Jamie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Call opposed, same sign. School nurse membership in NASN.
Julie would like to become a member of the National School Nurses Association and is asking the school to pay her fee, and the yearly fee is one hundred and forty dollars. It affords her access to other resources, so. It's something she just talked out about in one of her calls that she sits in on. And we worked with Sheila Freed through Avera for a long time when we did the calling through the iPad, and she suggested that it would be a great resource for Julie.
Resources like other nurses or flogs and that kind of stuff. I think it's a good idea with her being the only nurse in the room.
Yeah.
And, uh, something board for her.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion to approve the school nurse membership. Motion by Brooke, second by Ashley, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Approved two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar.
So I think Amy put those in your packets.
That's like the last page.
There are not, with the four-day school week, you know, there are not a lot of changes you can make, really, uh each year. So I gave this to a committee that consisted of, we had volunteers for the committee, so three teachers volunteered for that committee. They met, uh sent that back to me and Mrs. Hyder, and then we went through it, and then I met with that committee again. And this is what we would like to propose to the board for consideration. So as far as the start date, in-service dates, those are very similar to this year. Uh it starts out with two and a half days that first week, and I think this year we had three and a half days. One thing also that looks a little different is in January, January second is an off day, and then the third is an in-service day, so we can all get together before we have students again. Otherwise, it's almost a carbon copy of what we have this year. As far as instructional minutes, it puts us where we need to be and it gives us some wiggle room with late starts and things such as that, so that we can have late starts and not have to work and make it up time right away. Those orange circles are snow days that would be built into the calendar, similar as to what we've had the last few years.
Nothing ever stands out on a calendar until it's above we go. Like a school board meeting on Valentine's Day.
That probably won't happen again for a while now.
Are the red Fridays, Fridays that we have off?
Those are the off.
Non-teacher days are what you wanna say, and the green, obviously, are?
Are the teacher, yep. Oh yeah, sorry, we did not put a table with that. The yellow would be uh full in-service days where staff is required to attend.
So the red, do you have actually, now that I'm looking at it, the red is actually would be uh like a a holiday, a makeup holiday instead of the Monday, and then the white ones are the ones that are just a teacher day, like if there's not one that month. Do you know what I mean?
No.
So the red ones?
So the, okay, so, well, there's a lot of Monday holidays.
Okay.
And so a lot of times after a Monday holiday, we take that Monday up, we we take like that Friday off before or the Friday off after, so we can make that up. So those are red, it looks to me like, I didn't read the calendar, but that's.
So the red, nobody's here in the color.
Nobody's here, it's like a holiday.
So in September, that's Labor Day weekend.
You're gonna, you're gonna work Labor Day Friday, or Friday post-Labor.
Yes, that night.
On the night, yeah.
That makes sense.
That's our four-day school week, and if you look down, see, if you look in October, there's a white one on a on seven.
Mm-hmm.
That's, there's no holiday there, so that's just not a day. It's a day that we're not here, but it's not marked, it's like a makeup holiday, you know what I mean?
Yeah, makes sense.
That's, that's how it looks to me as I'm looking at it.
So the red are, nobody's here.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions about the calendar? I have a motion to approve the school calendar twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Kevin, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Open enrollments.
So we have two, and if you notice, the numbering system is different because the first one is for a student that I had emailed you about a few weeks ago for a staff, concerning a staff member. And then the next one is our first open enrollment for next year, usually we do those in May, but I thought with, we want to encourage open enrollments, let's start accepting them as they come in, so.
We're okay approving both of them?
Correct? Doing the class size, I guess.
Okay.
And they don't require any further resources for the school?
I have a.
If we, if they did require a service, would we allow them, or would we look at, if, would we make sure we have enough staff to cover a student that we did?
Similar to class size, to me, that's the same type of thing, we need to make sure that we don't need to add additional personnel.
Any other questions on the open enrollments? Have a motion to approve the open enrollments, I was listening.
Motion.
Motion by Ashley, second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Um contracts for board approval, nine point five point one, Jason Bishop amend from seven through eight track to assistant track.
So Mrs. Hyder had resigned from assistant track, I opened that up with staff, and Mister Bishop was the lone applicant, and he's been in the program, and so I would like to have us move him up to assistant track and then open seven to eight and hope that we get an applicant for that.
Is there just one seven, excuse me, seven to eight track?
We have Mrs. Utech as the head, Mister Vincent is our throwing coach and assistant, and then seven to eight. They all work together, but those are the positions. So this would leave seven to eight open if we amend his contract to.
I'll make a motion to amend his contract and have him be the assistant coach. I'll second that, too.
And we're just gonna open the seventh and eighth grade up, okay? Um all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Administrative contracts, um I think to do them separate, I will abstain from Amy's. So maybe we'll do her first. Um this is to approve the contracts for administration um for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. I'll start with Amy. I have a motion to approve Amy's contract.
Question before we motion, do we need to add some language about completing negotiations for salary next year to the motion?
Yeah, the negotiations.
Pending negotiation.
Negotiations, yeah.
So I'd make that motion for Amy to be offered a contract for twenty-two, twenty-three pending the outcome of the negotiations.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Jamie, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, I abstain. Um Jennifer Booms-McKelce. Um I do have a question on this one, um I would like to have the discussion about high school principal. Um so I'm just kind of wondering if we can approve superintendent tonight, and then maybe at the next meeting, visit the principal portion, if that's okay, okay? Um any discussion on that? Okay, so. I have a motion to approve the superintendent contract for Jennifer Booms-McKelce, pending negotiations.
Motion.
Motion by Ashley.
I'll second it.
Second by Jeff, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Administrative contract for Lindsay Hyder, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, pending negotiations.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Ted, second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, alright, motion carried. Nine point six is bus barn bids. We only have one? Alright, looks like this is from Pisek Construction, um the bid is for a twelve by one hundred foot bus barn in addition to the west side of the existing structure and continuing the roof line down using post and beam wood construction. Steel from manufacturers, color selection matching as close as possible in color and gauge of the existing materials, replace concrete footing with four-foot-high foundation and a six-inch-thick concrete floor. Extend out four existing electrical circuits with outlets and add four lights. This bid does not include HVAC or H A V C, I'm assuming that's the same thing. Plumbing, building permits, seating, doors or windows, exterior concrete, insulation or vapor barriers. It comes in at fifty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Five four seven seven zero?
Five four seven seven zero. Do we, is there doors that we're going to need? No, no doors, no windows, no nothing.
So everything they listed, we don't need. Ted was there that day when, uh we did have a couple people show up for that pre-bid meeting, and we talked about different things, and we talked about insulation, and do you wanna speak to that a little bit at our discussion?
Sure, when Justin Pisek and the electrician were there and asked the questions of worth even insulating the shop, but since it isn't heated, it's really not worth doing, we aren't gonna gain very much, and we'd have to replace all of the garage door, insulated doors, so we left that off. Pisek was the one that looked at this a few months ago and gave us an initial recommendation, higher than his es- initial estimate, but that's just a lumber and steel prices are. Seems like a reasonable bid for what it is, and if we wait, it'll just get more expensive, probably.
Does he, do you know, when did he say he could complete it, once it got warm?
We put in there that to be completed by July fifteen.
Okay.
Yes, was that the debt construction that we're planning to put down?
So this dollar amount covers or does not cover electricity?
It does cover the electrical.
So he's gonna sub out the electrical and that's on him?
And that includes just the up, I think he's just moving outlets?
Moving outlets for where we plug the buses in.
Yeah, and then adding some new lights to the.
Cause that's later on the back wall, now it probably is gonna go to the back wall.
Yes.
Cause that's J C electric, right?
Yes.
And we got stuck once by him already. Well, he's not the contractor, Pisek is the contractor.
Any other discussion on the bus barn?
If we do this extension onto the bus barn, uh the bus is gonna pull out of there every morning to deliver kids, pull back in, close doors. Where are we still gonna be parking outside and?
When the weather was nice, I would say we would still park up here because of time of our staff, with the staff there.
Cold weather, all summer, maybe, housing's had.
Cause I mean, it's still nice, but having those vehicles sitting in the sun are still, you know, where they've learned, still environmental things, you know, breaking down paint and and such. I, somebody approached me this week and asked why they ever even think about building the bus barn, where we don't park buses inside anyhow.
Is it ten feet, is it a ten-foot extension, I didn't catch that.
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. Twelve feet deeper.
So it should give us, just leave three foot in the front, three foot in the back? Just, just thinking outside the box a minute, and I can't name all of your bus driving staff, but would there be a situation? I, I hear what Jamie's saying in terms of parking them, and I get what you're saying. It's a mad rush to get kids here, and it probably is difficult to drive the bus down there, be back here in time, if you will, if you have teachers, I get that. Would there be such a situation that someone could move the buses to the bus barn in the morning and get them for that staff member, I, I don't know if that's, if that makes sense, or if that's even.
That might be a possibility, cause I know what, I mean, if you're, as a taxpayer, if we're gonna spend money at a bus barn, I do, I understand that comment too.
And if it's sixty degrees out, the bus is sitting here, it's sure nice to walk through and jump in, blow the kids, we can go, I get it. When I walk through the bus barn, drive it out, I get all that, um I just.
For the delivery in the morning and then at the end of the day, when our staff are in classes.
And who's gonna be that person that's gonna go get the bus and bring it up for Mister Utech, or whoever, I'm just, whoever comes to my, if that's a teacher, I, I don't know how that. I don't know how that works, there's a lot of moving parts there, but. I guess that's something a person could sure play with and come up with something. And I'm personally all for the bus barn, you know, we're getting two, three pretty new buses, it'd be nice to have somewhere to keep them, that they fit. And it's not heated, being plugged in overnight, that sure reduces a lot of wear on our engine. I don't think materials are getting cheaper, nothing's gonna get cheaper, I, I think if, if the district is gonna move in that direction, we better get to moving.
I would agree. You know, for that many square feet, it's really not that much per square foot. Pretty simple, straightforward type of project, it's just a matter of, I don't even think the steel will take that long to get here, it's not like it's some sort of a special, it's gonna be hard to come by, I don't think.
I think it sounds like naive, but you know, I don't deal with this stuff a lot, but why, why is there only one, why did only one person put on it?
Cause they're so busy with other things going on. I know a couple of bidders that were looking at it, like uh Justin Skipper. I asked him if he was gonna bid, and he had talked about it, well, he's got enough work out of here, but to pull a crew away for a week or two, or whatever this is.
It's not a real high profit margin job, if they're just putting in the force he meant and put up a steel frame, you know, cause there's no finish work and stuff, but, but they probably be more, might have something to do with it, maybe.
That makes sense, I was just curious, why?
It'd be nice to have two, two checks and balances.
Just to see what the difference would be, I didn't, not that we need to wait, I'm just just curious why, or maybe.
Amy, any thoughts?
It'd be good if the buses, so we can shut the doors, especially in the summertime when we have anything anyway.
Don't worry, he's writing a check for it.
I would make a motion to approve P six bid for the bus barn addition.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and second by Kevin, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Okay, next thing we have, uh number ten, executive session, South Dakota codified law one dash twenty-five dash two for personnel. We need to motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Ed student, ed student matter, to remind you, that's how.
Second by Jeff.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Ted, second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried.